Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda, EverSource Energy, 157 Corderville Road Parking Deck, Major Site Plan Review. This is the beginning of the public hearing. And at 7:05, we have EverSource Energy, 157 Corderville Road Parking Deck, Special Permit Lower Impact Development Public Hearing. So I'll ask the Town Planner to read the public hearing notice.
All right. Public Hearing Notice for Major Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Lower Impact Development. Per Section 174-10 of the Southborough Zoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, June 19, 2017, in the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, Second Floor Townhouse, to consider the application of Graves Engineering, Inc. on behalf of EverSource Energy for site plan approval at 7:00 PM. Per Section 174-10.1 of the Southborough Zoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, June 19, 2017, at the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, Second Floor Townhouse, to consider the application of Graves Engineering, Inc. on behalf of EverSource Energy for Lower Impact Development Special Permit at 7:05 PM. These hearings concern the construction of a parking structure over an existing paved parking area at 157 Corderville Road, Assessors Map 28 Lot 21. A copy of the plans and applications may be reviewed at the Office of the Planning Board at the Townhouse during normal business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Can you just tell us what's been submitted so far by the applicant? And also, any comments that we've received back from Public Safety or our engineering consultant?
On May 23rd, Graves Engineering made a submission for the application for major site plan and the special permit for lower impact development. On May 31st, the public notice went to the town clerk and the project was advertised in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks, leading us up to this evening. This evening, at about four, quarter of 5:00 PM, we received Fasson O'Neil review comments pertaining to the first submission, which we handed out here this evening to the applicant and the proponent. As far as review comments from town departments, we received feedback from the DPW, no comments. The Fire Department had some comments. No comments from the Police Department. No comments from the Building Department. No comments from the Board of Health. And no comments from the Board of Selectmen. The applicant is currently scheduled for a Conservation Commission hearing on July 22nd, coming up, for a storm water permit. I don't believe you're going for a notice of intent. Right? Just storm water. Okay. And so, just to summarize, comments were received from the Fire Department and we have feedback pending from Conservation.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Yep, please come to a microphone. Introduce yourself and your team.
Do you prefer we look at that or should I put?
No, you can put something up on the tripod. And Elizabeth usually keeps right along with what you're talking about. You're free to take the microphone over to the tripod if you want. Any way you want to do it.
Thank you. My name is Mike Andrade with Graves Engineering, here on behalf of EverSource. Also with me is Bill Medinger, the Project Architect, and John Petrella of EverSource. As Ms. Quinn stated in the announcement, we're seeking major site plan approval and a lower impact development special permit for the parking structure project at the site at 157 Corderville Road. And I've put the existing conditions plan up to start. If anyone's been familiar with the site, actually, if anyone's been on this board in '14, you may recall, we just did another parking project. At that point, we created this lower parking lot and these other two lots here. The project now is located right in this footprint here, above this existing parking lot. So this is the main driveway coming in of Corderville Road. So you'll see this retaining wall on your left as you come in. The gate, entry gate, which doesn't show on this plan, is about here. And this parking lot right here is the location of the structure. So our plans represent the two levels of the structure. We're looking now at the lower level. That is Sheet 4, please. So what we're doing is creating a structure over this existing parking lot by constructing some piers and supports that'll hold up the upper level, that'll be accessed from this new ramp into it here. So right now, this parking lot is set quite a bit lower than this driveway. This driveway rises up to the entrance of the building, which is here. So naturally, this ramp fits at grade at this point. So that second floor of the structure is at grade at this point here and matches the finished floor elevation. So it fits pretty well without really any earthwork. The bottom level, we do have to do some regrading and some utility relocation in that area. There are a number of utilities that run through here, electric, water. We're not touching the gas line, thankfully. So we are doing some utility relocation work in here. The upper level sits right above this and the ramp entry here. It is an open roof structure and the sides, the four sides are open as well. Access will be maintained to the lower level through this drive here to the parking rows and obviously to the second row through the ramp here. And if you switch to Page 5, Sheet 5, if you don't mind, behind you, you can see the layout of the second level. So the project totals 103 parking spaces, but it's a net gain of 49 because there's already existing parking in the lower level that we're reconfiguring somewhat. So, you know, it's quite a costly project to add these 49 parking spaces, but they do need it. This site serves as the Emergency Response Center for their operations. So in the wintertime, they have a lot of, anytime there's a storm, they have a lot of people coming to the site for meetings and sending crews out to different locations. That was the purpose of this parking lot here, which they've since determined they need more. Anyone that's been to the site knows it's pretty well-developed around the boundaries already. There's a number of steep slopes and ledge outcroppings around the boundary of the rest of the site, which you can't see here. So this is kind of what we're looking at now to gain some additional parking on the site, is this parking structure. As far as utilities, the upper level, since it's open to air, that drainage will be collected through a series of catch basin structures in the deck itself. That runoff will be collected and routed to the existing drainage system on the site, put through a treatment system first. And the lower level, because it's an enclosed area, that must go to sewer. There is no sewer on the site. There's only septic. We cannot put that flow to septic. So we've designed a holding tank in this area here to take any runoff from, you know, wet cars or snow melt that may be in cars potentially, into a separate system that goes through a catch basin, a treatment unit, and then to this tank. That tank has an alarm system on it. So if it reaches a certain level, it'll notify EverSource that they need to have it pumped. Frankly, you know, there shouldn't be a whole lot of water down there anyway. We've graded the site so that there's no runoff from outside running into there. So it's whatever's dripping off the cars or there's any snow on vehicles that may melt. That's the only water we'll get in that system. And there'll be, I think we're putting a standpipe. We putting a standpipe in here, Bill?
I'm sorry?
We putting a standpipe in here for fire protection?
The Fire Chief, the question yesterday.
Yeah. The Fire Chief had a comment about fire protection for the garage. So we'll be putting a standpipe in the structure as well for them to serve their fire protection duties. So that's the project, pretty much. If there's anything in particular you'd like me to go over in more detail or any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you. What we'll do is open it up to the Planning Board members and then to the public for questions and comments. Open it up to the Planning Board right now. Mrs. Latrell?
So you're just putting another level on an already existing parking lot?
Yes. The lower level is going to remain asphalt. We are repaving it because we're regrading it. So it's not a concrete deck or anything like that. So basically, it's a structure above the existing parking area, if you will. So you're exactly correct.
So nothing really outside of that already existing parking area?
With the exception of this ramp right here, to get access to that second level, it's entirely new impervious area or existing impervious, if you will.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jenks?
Good evening. Who's going to use this parking?
It's, I think that Bill can speak to this, too. It's mostly for, well, it could be daily employees that are there during the summer when there's non-storm events. I think the intent is for the overflow in the storm events, if I'm correct. Right, Bill?
Yeah. My name's Bill Beden. Jerome, the Project Architect of the NBA International Architects. Basically, the upper level parking, the low-level parking right now is currently company vehicles, gas meter readers and people of that nature. So basically, they're going to be parking in the same places that they were before. The upper level, when EverSource took over Commonwealth Gas quite a while ago, the fourth floor and a lot of the administrative functions of the building was empty. And over the years, we've slowly started to fill that in. The site has 28 and a half acres of land, but a good chunk of it is rock. So what ends up happening is the, now that we've started to bring administrative people back into the building, they have to park a long distance away. So it's basically going to be day employees, mostly administrative people, that'll be using the upper deck.
So you said as you bring the administrative people back in, so you're increasing the number of people there? These are new employees for that facility?
We're bringing, again, the good chunk of the building, the fourth floor totally was vacant for a number of years. If the site had been originally designed for parking spaces for the total maximum occupancy for the site, for a long time, we were able to get away with the fact that there was mostly service people that were the service center people, which are located, most of their parking and all their vehicles are located, you know, lower out on the site. As soon as we start to fit out the fourth floor, which we did last year, and parts of the third floor, which were also vacant, we're bringing back people that at one point in time were there. The building was full at one point. So essentially, when they became empty, we just went back in and renovated. We've been trying to do a major upgrade to the building for years, including sprinkler work and fire protection and fire alarm and everything else.
So it sounds like the answer was yes. These are additional employees, new?
They're new employees. They wouldn't be, in terms of numbers, they wouldn't be additional over what was originally there and what the building was.
Originally, when?
10, 15 years ago.
Okay.
So, but the large chunks of the building have been vacant since then.
Do you have any information on how many new employees are looking into adding or?
John might have.
My name is John Petrella and I'm a project engineer at EverSource. The building, what happened is on the second floor, like Bill said, which was abandoned for quite a number of years. I don't know, 10, 12, 15 years. When we rebuilt it, we filled that floor. And I believe the number is like 139 people that we added to that floor that we brought back in. Once we, last year, when we renovated the fourth and also renovated parts of the third floor to add employees. So it was roughly 139.
And that's the number for the facility? You're not bringing more in after you complete this parking?
That's correct. Yeah. The, this parking deck is solely to serve the people that are already on the site. We don't have the intention of bringing any more on the site. As a matter of fact, we can't. The offices are full. So the square foot office space inside the building basically is full. There isn't space to put anybody else there. The deck itself, the intention is during the day, it will ease our parking situation there because we have a lot of conference space. And because EverSource spans three states, we have meeting rooms. So we find a lot of stress on heavy meeting and training days. We fit, but not real well. And then the other thing that we do there is because it's a major storm center where once a winter storm hits and we bring people in, it's a lot safer to park those people close to the building where they can come right in and come right out without traveling any distances. It's pretty common for us to have slips and falls in the parking lot during storms as people leave their assignments. So we like having this parking close to the building so these people can get in and out.
So they slip and fall closer to the building?
No, no. Usually it's at, it's usually with their hand on the door of their car is where they usually fall. So.
So this, you're projecting will handle your parking needs until when?
This should, really, this should handle our parking needs forever. We have no room on the site that we can build on, additional building space. And we have maximized the number of employees at the site.
You could have put this deck, and I'm a little surprised you didn't, in the back of the building, over that parking lot. You've got nice rock ledge for support. It'd be bigger than this.
Yeah. The rock ledge has basically been our problem. I know last, in 2014, I remember, I took the Planning Board for a tour. At that time, we toured around and saw all, you know, how we go up that way. So that's a problem. The other thing with the rear of the building is our major, we have two functions in this building. One function is the service function, which is the truck, service trucks going out and in. And the other function is the office function. And also, another thing that we're trying to do with this parking area is try, for safety's sake, to stop our office employees from parking in places where we have service vehicles because that's not a good situation. So with the addition of these parking spaces, the attempt is to keep all the office people parking out front and we put all the service trucks down back. And that's one of the reasons, that's a good point, because we really could build to the back of the building. But if we do that, we'd be putting our office people back where we really want to keep our service vehicles. So that was the purpose.
Thank you. I did not notice any handicap parking on the lower level. Did I miss it?
I got that, Jim. Yeah, I neglected to mention, because we're increasing parking as a result of this project, we need to add more handicap parking. So while, you know, 90%, 95% of the project is located right here in this upper lot with its existing handicap parking, we're creating one, two, three, four, five more handicap spots. So these are existing regular handicap spaces that we're adding here.
The front door.
The main entrance is right here. So these are closest to the entrance. So there's no handicap parking within this structure itself. It's not really handicap accessible coming up this sidewalk anyways. It's relatively steep coming up there. So all the handicap parking is located closest to the entrance.
Will that, when you talk about an open roof and open wall deck, you're talking just a totally open parking deck?
Yes.
Just a parking deck that's raised?
Yes.
Will that, is that being built to support another deck above it someday?
No. No. It's currently not designed for that.
Do your plans show the parking space dimensions?
Yes.
Did I miss that?
It's not on my plan because that is a structure. So those dimensions are on the architectural plans, which are part of the package you have as well. So all those dimensions are in there. Typical.
Typical space.
Typical sized spaces, typical sized aisles for two-way traffic.
Typical meaning?
24-foot aisles, I think, whatever the town standard is for parking spaces.
Yeah, nine and a half foot spaces.
Nine and a half.
By 18 feet by.
Yep.
What are you doing for snow clearing and storage on that deck?
Yep. So we have.
Just push it off the side?
No. Could you flip to Sheet 5, if you don't mind? So behind you, you can see there are, this is very, really very limited place, based upon snow, there's a small place in the corner here. We have a note on our drawing that snow needs to be removed from this deck. They already have equipment on site that they do that, backhoe is or whatever equipment they'll get up there, take the snow off and put it, place it somewhere else on the site. So there's really very limited to no snow storage in the upper deck level. So it needs to be removed.
And all major, all major snowstorms, even without this deck, we now remove the snow. So we'll put the snow, the problem is, and this is another parking issue. So the problem is with the constrainments of our site, where it's necessary in a major storm for us to push the snow down and take up spaces, which works very poorly for the site. So right now, even before the deck is built, we commonly have that snow trucked away and taken off-site to open up those parking spaces. So that's another thing that this does for us is it kind of, it brings down the burden of temporarily blocking those spaces. But all the snow from this deck will be taken off-site.
That affects your water, groundwater storage, too?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry. Heard a mention of it, but didn't hear. Has the Fire Chief reviewed the plans so that you know he can get equipment in there, both underneath and above?
He's not going to be able to, he's reviewed the plans and he's come back with his recommendations and his comments. The, we've got, there's, there'll be at a minimum 13 and a half feet of clearance underneath. So his, the primary attack vehicle, Engine 22, I believe, has 11 and a half foot clearance. So he should have, apparently, he's, 13 and a half feet is minimum for him. So he should be able to get in and around underneath the structure. But the structure itself is not set up for the loading of that particular vehicle, be it a pumper. It's like 80,000 pounds and.
I'm sorry to be jumping around on these questions. It's the way they hit me as I was looking at the plans. You presently have a storm water management plan. I think that you did in connection with the reconfiguration of the parking across from the entrance. Is that going to be modified or need to be modified?
Yeah. This, this project has some unique elements, being the storage tank and the deck and the storm removal. So those elements will be, they are already in their own operation maintenance plan. That'll be in conjunction with the existing plan for the other, for, I refer to this parking lot here that we did a few years ago.
Between the lower level and the upper level, did I see there is one stairway?
Yep. There is a stairwell right in the corner.
Between the two areas, there's one. Correct.
Yes.
Essentially, there's no access at the lower level to the building. So there's, being meter reader vehicles, the meter shop, which is located, you know, above the, you know, just beyond the parking area, is where they access those company vehicles down below. So.
So the stairwell is in this corner here. And there's also, you don't see it on this sheet, you can see it on the sheet behind you. There's a stair right here that connects the upper level to the sidewalk. So people don't have to walk down the ramp to get to the sidewalk. They can then through here, sidewalk into the building.
Did that get moved? I thought that was in the upper corner there.
We at one point had a connection to the building here that was value engineered out.
That's what it was. You took that out. I take it from our earlier discussion about the number of people and so forth, that you're not. not anticipating any new traffic impact because of this?
No, these people are already, already on the site.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, basically, there's no change of use associated with this construction. It's basically for what exists today, both vehicles and people. So, nothing changes except for we provide additional space for, for parking and for emergencies.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Thank you. You stole my question about the snow removal.
You can have it back.
Question about the, again, above on the new parking area, so no plans for solar panels or anything like that, any type of cover?
Early on in the concept development, we, Eversource was approached by people to put solar panels on, which would have predicated a roof structure of some sort to put the solar panels on. It just, what happens is at that elevation of, elevation three oh eight, if you will, the structure just gets too large.
Okay.
And it just, it would have been, we didn't feel it was worth the additional cost. Essentially, we'd be building two levels without access to the third level, the second level. So, the idea was scrapped and so there's not, there's no intention of putting another level or roof on the structure.
Okay. I see the value of, for individuals during snow times wanting to be in the covered part. So, I was concerned that there was no handicap parking within there, so now you're going to add additional handicap parking that's exposed. Is that going to be covered at all or anything like that? No, no plans for that?
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
We try to keep all the handicap up near the entrance to be able to cut the distance down. That is, the approach road coming up is, it's got a grade to it, so it would be difficult to park, to have a handicap parking on the deck itself and then have to traverse up the hill to be able to get to the entrance. So, by keeping everything up at the high level, it's basically.
Right, I understand keeping it up closer to the building, I was just wondering, I think it would be a benefit for a handicap person to have.
To have it covered.
Some type of coverage going out or just, just an idea.
Always a benefit to cover.
So, I know when we, I think it was 2014 when we did the first addition, they expand the lot, it was mentioned that during snow emergencies, probably trucks would come and sit in that new lot, and I believe that's why we made the, the light posts further on the edges and not in the middle and everything. Is it still the plan to have trucks and during emergencies come up and be stored in that location? And I asked for just the turning radius to get out, that they're not going to hit the new.
Yeah, on occasion, on occasion, you're right, during storms, sometimes you'd be bringing them forward, especially since when they're trying to clean out the rear of the, for the trucks. It's very, as you appreciate, because you saw the site, it's constricted in back where we keep our service vehicles. So, at, we, for short term, we sometimes bring those vehicles forward to that lot while we can clean the back and send our service vehicles back in. So, that is what we did back at that time. And the other advantage we gained from this particular deck as far as the service vehicles go is all the, the lower, the lower end of that, the underneath of the, of the deck we're going to build, is currently restricted to just service vehicles. And our idea there is they're first of all, close to their shops, and secondly, during snow emergencies, they don't have to stop and get all the snow off the top of their trucks before driving out, because we don't let our trucks go out with two feet of snow on top of them. So, this will be a big, a big help to us because now all those trucks which are, we call them like bread truck size, that go under there, won't have to be cleaned off. So, during the storm, they wouldn't have all that snow piling on top.
I was thinking, I thought it was more like the trucks with the cherry pickers and stuff on it, do those get pulled up too? I thought that's.
I mean, not, they never get brought up there to be left there or to be, or to be dispatched from there. Usually, they do go up there, but they go up there to temporarily while we service the back area and then get them back where they belong.
So, my question is, there's enough turning radius for the new road that they're not going to hit the structure for the parking that's already?
Well, on the, on the deck that we're going to build, the deck that we're going to build the top.
I'm not worried about it going on the deck up top, I'm worried about it turning to the west, or no, to the east, that, and going in and out, that it's not going to hit.
Oh, yes.
On the interesting road, the lower end of the, the bottom of the deck is like nineteen feet of clearance, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, it's pretty high.
Shouldn't be anywhere near the, the structure itself, so.
Pretty high.
Thank you.
So, you were handed the Fussin' O'Neill letter dated today. I don't suppose you've had a chance to look at it, but there's quite a few comments in here about the waivers that you're requesting relative to stormwater and plantings, and there's a concern about the thirteen hundred and twenty square feet of additional impervious. So, based on these comments relative to the stormwater runoff and some of the design, you've got a pipe that's twenty-five percent slope.
Mm-hmm.
And some other modifications that you're proposing that they're concerned, the things that you're modifying aren't meant to be modified. So, normally, we would have you, the engineer and architect, deal directly with the consultant and try to work out a, something that's acceptable to both. I think, looking at some of these things, I mean, they, they've even recommended that it's okay, you know, to waive some of, some of these things, others, they don't, and then others, they leave it at our discretion. So, just looking at this letter and the number and type of things that they're concerned about, it would seem to me you're going to have to reduce these and make improvements, especially relative to the stormwater design. And then, when you were here back a couple of years ago on the parking lots across to the east, there was the same story about, well, there's no place to, for detention on the site and there's little or no, no place for additional plantings associated with the new projects. So, we ask you to think outside the box a little bit and find other places, maybe not right there at the site, because in this case, the site is either a building or pavement and functions, and they function in that way. But you said earlier, I think you have twenty-something acres?
Twenty-eight and a half.
So, there may be other areas on your property where if you looked, they may have absolutely nothing to do with this project, but because it's your land and there's an opportunity maybe to enhance the environment in those other areas, we would look at that favorably, I think. Some of the things that we've done over the years is if there's some invasive areas, to have you clear those invasive plants. Others, and we're far from experts in this area, but others can help us, would be to do plantings that might enhance the habitat. I think at one of the subdivisions, not too long ago, we asked them to plant blueberries, blueberry bushes. There's other type of plants that would make it easier on some, some of the birds and things that are around that, you know, you could, again, enhance, enhance the habitat or enhance the, the regional significance of the site for wildlife and/or plants. So, I'd expect you to come back with something like that to offset some of these waivers So, there's sixteen items that they've commented on. You'll have to huddle through the town planner, make arrangements to go over these with, with Fussin' O'Neill, our consultant.
Yep. Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
I've just given these before the meeting, so I obviously need more time to go through them in detail, but I, I don't see anything in here that we can't address. The issues about drainage, just, they're more asking for, I think, my interpretation is, is the existing system okay to handle this small additional runoff that we're creating from this thousand or so square feet that we're creating. So, we'll look into that, we'll give them all the backup on that and the treatment unit as well. The waivers, we've asked waivers where we feel they're needed, nothing more than that because of the nature of the project. We will look at, we'll take your recommendation to heart and we'll look at other areas on the site that we can do some of those things that you mentioned. So, our plan would be to respond to this letter in writing, we'll, through the planning board office, engage Fussin' O'Neill if we can, directly to talk about some of these issues and come back to you at the next meeting with hopefully a resolution on all these comments.
Open it up to the public, if anybody has any questions or comments. Town Planner?
Just a couple of, behind the scenes things for the application itself. One of the requirements is to, you know, provide a list or copies of prior permits for the site and what you're currently looking for for permits. That was just absent from the application, so it might help if you just come up with a list of the permits that you've received for this and what you're working on right now.
For this specific project?
Yeah, for the site.
Okay, if we could go back years and years.
Yeah, I think within reason, just enough so that there's a sense of, maybe to the last project you had, but.
Okay.
You know what you're, I know you're seeking stormwater permits, it's just nice to have in the record that the application was followed. Then, I think you need to supply the name of the person who's in charge of making sure the LID application requirements are met in the field before, you know, before you do any site disturbing, and that's supposed to be submitted during the application process? Just who's responsible for that?
During construction or post-construction?
Pre, like just before you disturb the site, you're supposed to give us the name, well, actually during the application, you're supposed to give us the name of the person who's going to be responsible during construction.
That's what I mean, during the construction period.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. And then I think Fussin' O'Neill had the same comment, that the inspection and maintenance agreement is included, but it's just not signed.
We typically do that at the close, so we're not signing a bunch of documents.
Right, okay.
Once we have it finalized, we'll certainly provide the final version.
Okay. And just for my own sake, in the stormwater management report, the statement about illicit discharge compliance, I think there was reference to, there are no existing illicit discharges to G E I. Is that just a typo or do I not know that language?
Let me see.
That's like page three of three and the, see, right in the first line, it says, "Discharges to G E I," is that short for something?
G E I is Graves Engineering, Inc., that's, that's us.
Oh, that's you, okay.
So, we're saying, to the best of our knowledge and the owner's knowledge, there are no illicit discharges.
Okay.
Cross connections on the site.
I didn't make that connection, that, I know G E I is another, Green Enterprises International Light, and yeah, so I was like, oh, maybe that's leftover from another.
That is us.
Okay, I couldn't make sense of it, okay. That's much clearer, sorry about that. And, just for my own sake, you don't consider this redevelopment?
It's technically not because of, we, there is a net increase in impervious, even though it's very small, it's a thousand, whatever, thirteen hundred square feet. So, we could, we could say that the, you know, the rest is a redevelopment, we haven't, we haven't bothered going down that road, it really doesn't make a difference as far as what we do, because it's a parking structure anyway.
Okay. That's all I have.
Before I open it up to the public, I just, the thirteen hundred additional square feet of impervious is a concern, leads to me, and it's not the end of the world for this particular site, but what we see is, you know, you have the thirteen hundred, the next guy comes in, he's got nine hundred, another guy comes in, he's got twenty-two hundred, and it's all relatively insignificant compared to the total acreage, but it has a cumulative effect throughout the, you know, the drainage area, along with groundwater recharge. We look to hope to have an engineer that can find a way to improve those areas, not just have them equally offset. So, if there's, if there's things that you can do to increase groundwater recharge and more than offset the thirteen hundred square feet, those are the type of things that we'd be looking for. Because right now, an equal trade-off still leaves the water budget deficient relative to recharge and runoff for the area. So, open it up to the public, anybody with any questions or comments? Seeing none, so you're going to have to come back. Our next meeting is next Monday, but you're not invited.
Okay.
That would be too soon anyways, right?
Uh, probably is.
So, the meeting after that is July seventeenth, it's Monday, July seventeenth, and we can put you on that agenda. And the approval period is?
Right, second page.
Let's see, July twenty-second for major site plan and August twenty-first for the lower impact development. So, on the seventeenth, if we're not able to have a vote for the major site plan, then you'd be looking at requesting an extension. And then, our, the meeting following, our July seventeenth, our July seventeenth meeting is, have we picked a date for that one?
Yes, it's on the standard. Elizabeth, do you know the date? It's about a month later, there's one in August. Let me run in my office and I'll tell you, takes two seconds. August fourteenth.
Yeah.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for the Eversource Energy, one fifty-seven Cordova Road Parking Deck, Major Site Plan Review for seven o'clock on July seventeenth, and that we also continue the public hearing for the Eversource Energy, one fifty-seven Cordova Road Parking Deck, Special Permit Lower Impact Development for seven oh five on July seventeenth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? You'll note that there's four planning board members, you need four for the special permit. Mr. Stein isn't here tonight, as far as I know, he'll be here on July seventeenth. So, if he is able to review this tape, he'll be able to participate.
Okay.
At that time, just so you'll know. So, motion's been made and seconded, any more discussion, all in favor? We'll see you on July seventeenth.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is seven forty-five, Ken's Foods, three twenty-five Turnpike Next item on the agenda is seven forty-five, Ken's Foods, 325 Turnpike Road, Major Site Plan Review. This is a continued public hearing from May first, May fifteenth, and June fifth. Welcome back, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good to be here.
Before we get started, I'll ask the town planner to update us on how we got to this point with the project, and what's, what's happened, and what we're hoping to do tonight.
Okay, at our last planning board meeting that was held on June fifth, we voted on the lower impact design special development, special permit, and we continued the major site plan approval to this evening. We have the decisions for both finalized. Town Council provided feedback on those decisions and had no further comments, based on, I believe it was one iteration before this evening, there were a few typos I found, so you'll notice that there's a June nineteenth dated for today, copies of the decisions, which barring any additional changes or comments would be the final documents, and those are in your package.
Thank you. So, really quickly, because we've already voted on the lower impact development, and it's quite possible we will be entertaining a vote on the major site plan review tonight, just quickly describe the project for the public, and anything else that you wanted to add to what the town planner. I just don't want to come in cold, so if people are watching at home, they say, what is this project? So, let's just give everybody a little bit of a brief update.
Sure, and before I let the engineer move forward, because a lot of it's really more engineering and technical work.
And we always need to know who you are, Bill.
And I'm Bill Pazonium, the attorney for Ken's Foods. There was one other item that was open, and we needed the final comments from Fuss and O'Neil, which they said there were no further comments, so I just want to make sure the record's straight on that, too.
Yeah, that's correct. I did specifically ask them if there were any other issues and concerns, and they said unless the planning board had any, they did not.
Okay. You want to describe the project?
Sure, my name is Scott Doty, I'm a principal with the firm John G. Crow Associates, we're civil engineers, landscape architects for the project, and I may, if I may ask Elizabeth to move to one of the, it's probably best to describe the project on one of the site, proposed site plans, a little bit, a couple, about six or seven sheets in, Elizabeth, thank you. Project is, involves the renovation of the site plan for, that's associated with renovations of the warehouse, which are internal, there are no building additions. The project, of course, to be real basic, is on, is that 325 Turnpike Road, and, you know, keep going, please, Elizabeth, thanks, these are existing conditions, we'll go to one-on-one where we see beyond the sediment and erosion control plans. And, we're almost there. Here we go, the next sheet down, that one right there'd be good. The project involves, to those who aren't familiar with the site, to Orient U, Route Nine is on the left, this is a two-sheet plan, Route Nine is on the left, that's the south, the north is to the left of the site, excuse me, Route Nine's on the right, west is in the bottom of the sheet, and east is to, is towards the top of the sheet. Majority of the project work to improve the site plan is associated with improving the vehicular and pedestrian flow through the site, and of the improvement of the stormwater management system to improve stormwater quality, because we're surrounded by wetland and water resources here in the site. This, this plan shows the west area, where truck docks exist at this warehouse building, where it's going to be totally reconstructed, drainage system reconstructed, with drain outlets that, that will have treated stormwater, then releasing, currently it's not, not treated, or very little at, at least, it's treated very little right now. If you go to the next sheet, Elizabeth, thank you very much, it shows the north end of the site, and in this area is a employee parking lot that's being improved, associated with that, in terms of water quality improvements, is the, is the creation of, and this in the sort of upper-left-hand corner of the site, as you can see, this plan, as you can see, is a restored buffer zone, which is currently all paved, we're removing pavement to allow for vegetated system to exist between the remaining pavement and the water resources there. Those are essentially the improvements on a broad, on a broad-brush presentation for those of you who don't know anything about the project. It's simply the reconstruction of trucking, truck dock area, and the redelineation of employee parking to improve vehicular circulation and improve stormwater quality.
And, just a couple other quick points, so that if there are any neighbors watching, there will be no loading dock activity on the backside of the site, the north side, which face the residential area, and the employee parking lot, we're actually culling out some of the asphalt that's there already and making it a little smaller. The amount of employees at the site will be approximately the number that are there today, although it will be fully automated internally. The activity for trucks will all be in that western corner, and it should be a much better project for both the neighbors and for Ken's, because the circulation will be great and the access to Route Nine will be appropriate. Ken's will continue to be a good corporate citizen, they are working with the public works department to try to get some signage along Route Nine and on Deerfoot and a couple of other locations, to make sure the trucks aren't going out on those roads. We've been told that they thought a couple of the trucks were ours that have been out there, but we found that they weren't, but we're still going to continue to work to, you know, help the community and cut down on that traffic. As Scott said, really the bulk of the work has to do with the drainage and the work that will be done on the wetlands. So, that's in a nutshell.
Just a couple of things I wanted to add, that there were no additional comments from any of the town departments, and you're scheduled for your decisions, or your conservation commission results at the upcoming meeting this Thursday?
Thursday evening, they closed the hearing already, and it's just a matter of going over their decision.
To get your order. Will there be any changes to the plans from what you submitted already dated June first, so those, or the stormwater report?
Nope, every, everything remains as the current plans.
Okay, because that's how we have it written in the, okay, thanks.
Very good, thank you. I'll open it up to the board to see if there's any questions or comments. Mr. Mills has missed two, so we're just gonna skip over him, Mr. Jenks.
Can you quickly describe the trucking route around the facility now?
Yes, yes, Mr. Jenks. Elizabeth, if I could ask you to go back to the prior plan, that would be great. The trucking activity is intended to remain on this west side of the existing building only. To the right of this plan is the driveway connection to Route Nine, and the area directly, oh, thank you so much, yep, I forgot my red pointer in the, in the car, thank you. This area here, the, this area right here is the area that's being revamped for the truck activity, the truck docks along the west side of the building, and this area here for trucks waiting to use the truck dock and parking temporarily, what have you. There's a loop in this area here, but it's just from Route Nine in this area only, and then out to Route Nine. There is no, there are no plans for any reason that any of these trucks need to go along the north side of the building or up towards the northeast. If they're up there, it's, it's an accident and it's temporary, and there's no business up there for loading and unloading.
Yeah, just to, to your point, because there is some activity on the back of the building right now, and that's because the renovation is going on inside, and they had to move most of the product to the backside of the building. So, there'll be a little bit of activity back there over the next couple of months.
But the major part is now confined, or will be confined, to the west side?
All of it.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
All of it will be on the west side after this.
That's correct.
That's good. Thank you.
Mrs. Luttrell?
No questions.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Mr. Mills?
I'm just curious, so the beavers back?
Beavers are back, but we, we had an expert go out there, and we, the conservation commission applied for a permit so they could go out and take care of it, and we're there trying to put something together, so there'll be annual or every couple of years go out and check it to make sure it's still functioning right.
Thank you.
The water should go down dramatically in the next couple of weeks.
I just noticed the water rising, I figured they were back, and you mentioned it before.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, I want to compliment both of you on this project. You came in here with, you know, very professional presentations, very clear and easy to understand, even though this, this site has a lot of moving parts, especially with the, with the stormwater and, and the modifications and revisions that you made, if you, kind of if you don't understand how stormwater treatment works, you can get lost, but you, I think you were, you were both very good at explaining how the, how the system is going to be improved and how it works. And then, one of the things that we talked about a couple of meetings ago was, I think you said there were thirty-five employees in there, around there?
That's the...
It's two shifts.
That's the, that's a shift number, yes, per shift.
So, a total of seventy, around seventy people?
Yeah.
Yeah, but not expected ever at one time, is there anywhere?
That's why we reduced the parking for the employees in the back, because it's not necessary.
Right. Well, I, I mean, over the years, we've, the planning board, it's interesting to know who, who or how, or what, what the work is there, and how many people, but most recently with the addition of the Economic Development Commission in the town, the number of employees at these different sites is something of interest, because it's not just employees, it's car trips, of course, but it's also people coming into town and maybe buying things or using some of the services in town, and the economic development people have shared with us the importance of that. So, and, and you've also take, it seems to have taken pride in saying what a good neighbor that Ken's is and plans to be. And I think, at one point, you were telling us that the inside of the building was kind of fascinating with all the robots and...
It will be when it's completed, it's, it's gonna be all automated, so there'll be robots, you know, lift, the cranes.
The robot cranes, right.
The bed of cranes.
Is, so, so to me, looking at this project, there's like two opportunities here to have Ken's be a good neighbor, in the form of, and you say if it's not appropriate, but it would seem like a field trip for, the little kids would probably not be a good idea, they wouldn't know what they're looking at, but maybe like junior high kids to get a free tour from Ken's to see how the facility works, and, you know, you said the raw products come in, and then the, the stuff goes out and it's ready to go?
The, the, this is just a warehousing facility, the product is made over in Marlboro.
Okay.
I have no problem talking to Ken's, because I know they run field trips occasionally over at the other site, I'll talk with them, I can't bind them at this point, because there's nobody here from Ken's, but I will ask them and strongly suggest that they can to offer up, you know, a field trip, maybe annually, to bring the kids either to this facility, they'd, they'd actually find the other facility more interesting.
And the second point of interest, too, I think, would be the stormwater piece of it. If there was a science class that was, you know, interested in, in, and you could show how the water quality is improved, and you'd be, you know, the kids would be outside. So, I'd like to throw that out there and, and as a nice thing that you could come back through the town planner and say, yeah, we'll be willing to do that, and then she would work with you and maybe the Trotty School Kids, Mr. Lavoy, the principal, and set something up so that we can have Ken's...
That's a great idea, sure.
Yeah, and with the stormwater, it's really probably gonna be a classroom, though, because they're really not gonna be able to see anything out there, it's all gonna be underground, but, you know, we might be able to explain it to them, and then when they go out, they can watch, look at the site.
There is, there, there are a number of things that will be able to be observed and, and, because it is a system that needs to be observed on a regular basis, so I'd be happy to participate in that if we were able, if we were able to put something like that together, that made sense both for Ken's Foods and, and the community.
And would each student be given a bottle of salad dressing?
That I'd have to ask, having, having worked for them in nineteen sixty-five in a much smaller facility, they're pretty generous.
Does anybody else want to put more of a squeeze on Ken's at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to point out, I'm sure Bill would agree, is that the town staff has been tremendous help through this process, been very helpful, thank you very much. Yeah, and great, great work with them, done a good job.
So, if there's no other questions or comments, then it's appropriate for us to close the public hearing for the site plan. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for site plan for Ken's Foods, Inc., 325 Turnpike Road.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion, all in favor? Three to zero, zero. Abstention, and it would now be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve the major site plan. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board determine that the approval criteria contained in Section 174-10 Point D of the zoning bylaw has been met, and also to grant the major site plan approval to allow modifications to the existing parking areas and loading docks at the site, the installation of new utility service lines and improvements to stormwater drainage system at the existing development known as Ken Foods, Inc., located at 325 Turnpike Road, and in accordance with the plans entitled, proposed site improvements, Ken's Foods, Inc., 325 Turnpike Road, South Pro, Mass., consisting of twenty-two sheets dated January thirtieth, twenty seventeen, revised through June first, twenty seventeen, including site lighting plan sheets, C-6.1 and C-6.2 dated March thirty-first, twenty seventeen, prepared by Reflex Lighting, Seven Tide Street, Boston, Mass., and stormwater report, Ken's Food, proposed warehouse renovation, South Pro, Massachusetts, dated January thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and revised through May twenty-third, twenty seventeen, prepared by John G. Crow Associates, Inc., Landscape Architects and Civil Engineers, Thirty-Nine Fulton Street, Worcester, Mass.
Winchester.
Winchester, thank you. Plan stamped by Donald A. Provincia P.E. and Robert J. Buckley R.L.S., and stormwater report stamped by Donald A. Provincia P.E.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion, all in favor? Three to zero to zero, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll again apologize for dragging you back the extra night, but... I'll again apologize for dragging you back the extra night, but I'm much more comfortable having this...
It's okay, because we have, Thursday night, we have conservation, and we're moving at our own risk right now.
I would hated to have to memorize that, that motion, because I didn't have it in writing.
Yeah. No, we appreciate your effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an approval not required, 50 Oak Hill Road. Pass the town planner to us what this one's all about.
Okay, on May 26, 2017, we received Form A, application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval for 50 Oak Hill Road in Southborough, Mass., from the applicant James C. and Mary Sue Beal.
Right.
Present. We took a look at the plans, discussed them, sent them to town council just as informational purposes, for his knowledge of the area, and feel that they probably conform to the A&R requirements, but are here for discussion, just to make sure the planning board has a chance to ask any questions.
Where was the A&R?
We have a Mylar here with the required paper copies. We also have the required endorsement form. So the plan is here for signature and along with this document.
Want to look at it behind us, or did you want to, either way?
I, I'm calling.
All right, yeah, just leave it there. You can open it up to the board. Mr. Mills? Any questions or comments? Could you show us what line, come on up, and what lines are being changed or added or subtracted?
So this was one address, Hastings, from GLM Engineering. This was one large parcel, and we have divided the parcel into three lots. One lot that goes with the existing house, this is in a Residence A, that requires one acre of land and 150 feet of frontage. So we've created a lot around the existing house that has 2.59 acres and 240 feet of frontage. We've created a second lot that has 164.45 feet of frontage and two acres of land. And then there is a parcel to the rear that we have labeled not to be considered a buildable lot, that has 3.36 acres.
This is a row.
It's an, no, it's an abandoned, discontinued. So this one has, it's got a total, so it goes all the way across, so it has 164 total. And this one here, across the front, has 240.
I have no questions.
Mr. Jenks?
You've been doing these enough, so you know that our approval of an A&R says nothing about zoning or building permit or any other requirements that you might have to actually use the lots.
Yes, and we have a note on there that says, it's not, your endorsement is not a determination of zoning.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Mrs. Luttrell?
No questions.
A question on that third lot, the one that's not to be considered. What, do you have, is there an idea of what's going to happen to that, who's going to own it?
At the moment, the owners, the existing owner is going to retain ownership. It could be conveyed to any abutter, or at this point, he's going to hang on to it.
I can tell you the history if you want.
Yeah, sure.
I was going to divide it into a building lot, and Lee was going to buy the, Lee lives right next to, he was by the back, he didn't want anybody next to him. So I was going to sell him that third, that's why we divided in the third part. So Lee was going to buy that third part. So I was just going to sell the one building lot, as it was. That's why it was set up that way. And then when we were going to sell the house, the people who wanted to buy the house wanted everything. But I went through with it, because to get the value for their bank, for their loan, they need to know that it's got the value of another building lot. So it probably will never be built on, but we needed to get the approval for the bank, for the bank needed that.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Public? No? Very good. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the A&R for 50 Oak Hill Road.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. We'll sign this before we leave tonight, pick it up tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
With the town planner.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work on this.
So I just come in tomorrow and pick it up, you said?
Give the town planner a call tomorrow.
Or a day or so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion, 121 Northborough Road, release of lot covenant.
You want me to give an opening?
Karina, you're on. Tell us what this one's about.
Um, this is 119 and 121 Northborough Road. The subject lot that we're talking about is Lot Number Two. It's the left lot on this drawing right here, which is considered 121.
Yep.
On Lot One, which is 119, the original address, there is an existing house. And in the recent past, a house was built on Lot Two.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll give you a chance. Go ahead.
So back in March, the proponent contacted the planning department in search of releasing the lot as required. So we did some research into the original conditions of the planning board decision and recognized that there were a couple of things that needed to be done. And one was a plan stamped by a professional land surveyor certifying that the installation of the bounds and the drill holes delineating the open space, which was condition one of the special permit for flexible development, that that be satisfied, which the proponent did submit, stamped by Bruce Salick. The other condition was open space area deed restriction language, condition number five, that the open space language be referenced in the deed of conveyance. And the proponent has produced a recorded copy of the deed, which you can also see on the Worcester Registry of Deeds, which indicates that language. And specifically, let me see if I have it here. On the claim deed for 121 Northborough Road, there is language on the second page. It's referenced in Book 56828, page 392. Open space areas as shown on said plan are subject to all restrictions for open space as defined by the Southborough Rules and Regulations for the subdivision of land and the Southborough zoning bylaws. That's what I know.
Do we have that? Do we have Bruce's plan here?
Yes, it was submitted with the application.
Yeah.
Actually with the release form and also a check for the fee for this class.
So, the existing house, which is at least fifty years old, is on the lot on the right? Lot One. And then the new house that was just built, the last year or so, is on Lot Two?
Yes.
So we have a draft release of covenant here. Planning Board of Town of Southborough does hereby release Lot Two, shown on a definitive subdivision plan entitled NBR Subdivision 119-121 Northborough Road, prepared by Bruce Salick and Associates for SMC Realty Trust of Marlboro, dated April 8th, 2011, and revised through June 7th, 2011, recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 890, Plan 116, so on. So the action by the planning board would be to make a motion to release the covenant? Is that correct?
I believe that's true.
Mr. Jenks, did you have any, you have the plan there? Sir, did you have anything to say? I know you wanted to say something.
Oh, I think she said everything.
Just tell us who you are.
I'm David Frank. I'm the owner of 121 Northborough Road. So I built the house, I think it was last year. I think we finished everything in August. Then I put it on the market. But then turns around, my wife decided that she wants to, you know, to have the house. I was like, all right, we'll move to the house. Then, you know, the week that we were closing on a whole deal, because I built through my company, then I had to buy from my company. And turns around, you know, it was one of the requires for the bank that I had to have the covenant released. But because I was buying from myself technically, they let, you know, fly, and then I was able to close everything. Now here I am, trying to kind of get this released.
I'm glad you said that, because, you know, I go by there occasionally, and I saw the moving truck, what, a month or two ago, maybe?
Yeah, that was me.
Yeah. So, and now we're releasing covenant. Usually this happens before that, but now you've explained it.
Because I was buying from myself technically. It was just, you know, switching titles, so...
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
I just have a question, because this is my first covenant release.
Mrs. Luttrell?
I just have a question on the process and what we're looking at. I haven't done this before.
Okay, to the best of my knowledge, when the subdivision was approved, there was a covenant tied to it for this two-lot subdivision. And that covenant was required to be recorded. And I believe it was tied to, let's see here, let me just look. There was a permit, a decision of special permit approval for flexible development for this project. And let's see what it said here. Well, I guess that's going backwards a little bit, indicating that you need to have, prior to the building permit being released for Lot Two, bounds and drill holes delineating the open space shall be installed, and a plan stamped by a professional landscape certifying installation shall be submitted to town planner. And also the reference to that the open space language is to be recorded with the decision. And then there was a specific special permit open space requirement language that was recorded with the document required for that. So then I came upon the covenant, and I can't recall exactly where it was referenced, but there's an official recorded covenant that had several conditions, that before selling or conveying Lot Number Two, shown on said approved definitive plan, or building a building, the owner will construct the driveway, install the municipal services that were required for the subdivision in somewhat of a paper street fashion, so not an actual roadway, but to ensure that the infrastructure was built for both of those lots to be viable. And then also, that said Lot Number Two, subject to this covenant, may be released from its operation and restrictions by the vote of the planning board, evidenced by a recordable certificate of performance signed by the planning board, enumerating Lot Number Two so released upon completion of construction of the way shown on the approved plan and installation of services and other improvements to provide access and services of said Lot Two. In the file is a letter from a couple planners prior to me, indicating that that had all been satisfied, that the infrastructure was built. And that letter was given to the building department. Actually, it was a memo to the building inspector, indicating that those things were in order. So when we got the request for the lot release, we double-checked that and found that was satisfied. And then the other condition talked about, you know, the recording and that the process, you have to have this lot released for legal purposes.
So typically, this would have been done before the occupancy permit? Okay. All right. So the other condition was that, oh, so this, it says it shall be completed within two years, but it already was in the files? We just haven't, this just came before us?
Yeah.
At a delayed, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of like cleanup, which was triggered by the bank requiring with the, it sounds like when you had to transfer the title from one entity to your other entity, that that came to the surface, and the bank wants it cleared, they must have let it go, like you said. And so you're just doing the housekeeping.
Yeah, because technically, I was in the, I was in a mortgage for the company anyways, because, you know, I own the company. It was my name going to my name, so they go, it's fine, it's just one, you had the same purse anyway, so...
These are more common, like with subdivisions, especially big subdivisions, where I know in the past, here in town, the road may be a long road, and there may be many houses to be built. And sometimes what the developer does is, he'll build the infrastructure and the road, six houses in, and then ask to have that part of the subdivision released, so that he can, well, he can build anyways, but he can then sell the lots, or sell the lots with houses on them. And then we go down another six houses and so on. So these are more common when we're releasing, in this case, this was a one-house subdivision. So, and you're right, normally this would have been done before. Any other questions? So the appropriate thing, I think, would be to, a motion to release the covenant for number, Lot Number Two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the covenant for 121 Northborough Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the covenant for one twenty-one Northborough Road, lot number two.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, so we'll sign this. You can come back tomorrow and get the signature of the board and the notary. You can get that tomorrow sometime.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to your new house.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the budget and new contracts. Were you going to distribute something?
Yes.
Okay. You'll notice that when we brought up the term, the next item, which is budget and new contracts, you'll see what, how much interest there is in this subject. So at this time of the year, the, the town planner and the board have been managing the, the budget approved by town meeting. And usually, at this time of the year, if there is any shortfall, we would have known about it and made appropriate adjustments. If there's any additional funds that need to be executed, this is the time of year what we, where we have done homework on this. We've asked the town planner back in early May and even in April to be doing that. We keep an eye on the salaries. We do have our expenses. There's training. You can see office supplies. And then there's an item here, it's called miscellaneous contracted services. We, we carry a budget line item for that. That's for contracted services that are beyond the expertise of the town planner or staff or even internal resources to the town. It's not a big item, but it is something that we exercise each year. And it's usually later in the fiscal year, so that it's more of a conservative approach to the whole budget. There's in-state travel, out-of-state travel. There's a line item here for dues and so on. Now, um, did you want to, we see some highlights here, Karina. And the way we did this last year, and I think for the previous years, point to the number that we need to execute.
Okay, you don't have, that shows what we have approximately left in the budget. It's got to be right here. Oh, here it is. Okay, on the first sheet of your handout, you'll notice that there's a highlighted item for encumbrances, approximately thirty-one thousand twenty dollars. What that is, is contracts from fiscal year seventeen, actually fiscal year sixteen. There were contracts that were encumbered into fiscal year seventeen, which cannot be re-encumbered. You're only allowed to encumber over one fiscal year. And if you look on the second page, actually go to the third page and you'll see, um, one, two, three, four highlighted items. The first two are contracts with Mass Autobahn. These are contracts that will, will be closed out and have been closed out and billed by the end of this fiscal year for the services provided. The first one is the deed research project for nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, which at the deed research subcommittee meeting that we had on June fourteenth, the subcommittee voted to close out the project and approve final payment for the nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So that will be reconciled. The second item is the five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for Mass Autobahn. That is part of a tree, a street tree research project that we've been working on. And that as well will be closed out and billed by June thirtieth. We've made a lot of progress. Mass Autobahn has been preparing information related to a street, street tree planting program, kind of a phase one, start two, coming up with recommendations and typical ways of implementing a street tree planting program that other towns have found successful. And one of the final tasks is to review this information with the DPW director. And we have a meeting scheduled on Thursday, June twenty-second, to review the information that's already been developed as part of this initial report in order to make sure we have their input on, you know, certain restrictions of where trees can be planted based on what's viable and so that they last and they're not conflicting with infrastructure or power lines and those types of things. So after that meeting, that will probably be one of the tasks closer to closing out that project, at which time we'll get a draft report from Mass Autobahn that we can review. And then if everything's in good shape and the board is happy with the report and the information and the recommendation for the next steps, that will also be billed for the end of this fiscal year. So that takes care of those two. Then there are two additional line items that reference RKG Associates, which was related to Judy Barrett in the past and her assistance with forty B laws and support and also for updating the zoning bylaws, which she began to help with at the time. Those, we contacted Judy Barrett. She's no longer with RKG. We followed up with RKG, if I'm not mistaken, and there were no other billable tasks that hadn't already been billed. So those two amounts of the fifty, five thousand seven hundred and the nine thousand nine hundred and eighty, those go back into the general fund for fiscal year eighteen and is called free cash. Sounds funny. It's not really free, but it goes back to the general fund. And in your handout, Elizabeth downloaded the definition of free cash, so it, oh, you don't have that? I'm sorry. I have it here.
I think we've, I think you've given us enough. Let me ask the board. Is that, do we have enough detail on, on those four items?
I'm confused on the, like, the first of the RKG. We paid four thousand?
Two hundred, yes.
Now I'm more confused. We paid four thousand two hundred?
Yes, we paid four thousand early on, probably, I believe, earlier in two thousand and sixteen. There was an amount for two hundred dollars as well.
That's not reflected here, though.
Let me see where that is. Hold on. It's reflected somewhere because I checked it to make sure it was total. I just have to look back and see where that came from.
I, this may be, may not be the, the document, but somewhere at some point in time.
Oh, here it is.
I'd like to see what we actually got billed under both of those contracts.
Okay.
I think the second one is, is shown what we would build, which is zero.
Well, that's pretty clear, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's the first one. What, what we were billed and what, what was it for?
Yes, the total four thousand plus the two hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did, I just, I can't pull it into my brain. I can't remember. But I know we checked it and we have that information.
Okay.
But it was either tied to, I, I believe it was tied to the support for the forty B process during the, one of your site plan review projects where she assisted in providing feedback on the law for forty B. If I'm not mistaken, the only other option it would be, would have been some charge for when there was an initial, when, when there was an attempt during that year to update the zoning bylaws. So there, there was some back and forth with how to approach it. But that's probably not the case. I think it's more the forty B portion.
Well, I know that she came to a meeting during the site plan review for Park Central.
Yeah.
That was the public meeting that she went to. And then she also met with, must have been myself and Jothi at another meeting. It was just an, an internal meeting to clear up and, clear up the, the nature and the details of the assignment. And so that, that was billable time also.
And here, I just did find reference to this, our research, that the, the four thousand dollar payment leaving the five thousand seven hundred was related to the forty B work and that the work for the zoning did not take place, so nothing was billed for that. And that's in a report we have that's dated prior to the one that we put in the package. I have some handwritten notes here from mine and Elizabeth's research on that, that, the two hundred dollars, though, I have to look back and see specifically what that was. It could have been. Then it wouldn't. Yeah, there was an initial two hundred that got paid. We'll, we'll make sure we know what it is. I know that it's valid. I just don't have the feedback precisely for you.
Thank you.
So that takes me to the second page of your handout, which is a projection on what's left in the budget for this year. And if you look at the summary at kind of the bottom half of the page, there's an amount for two thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents, which includes purchases that have already been made and billed, which included four new chairs for the planning office with casters on them. When we had visitors to the office, or we sometimes hold meetings there, when some of the other rooms are full, it makes it much easier to move around and people can fit better. And then the, there's a four hundred and seventy dollar amount of supplies and then an additional thousand dollars of supplies, which included items like ink cartridges for Elizabeth and my printer, just to have some stocked up. Flash drives, I, we ordered a wheel so that when we do do inspections, we can orient ourselves where we are when somebody asks, where's that open space? And we have to go out, we can kind of take the plan and measure off where we are. So helpful tools like that. Organizing the, the mailroom. Planning keeps a lot of our supplies in that room and we had to, there's all kinds of small stuff. So we ordered some things to organize that better, so it's not just a big heaping pile in there. And then things that we use all the time, flash drives. Some of the costs that are still pending is that we're hoping to buy a tablet at the cost of about eight hundred, nine hundred dollars, which will help us in the field when we need to access like the GIS mapping or something. Again, we'll be able to identify a parcel. In my past experience and having met with other planners, they, a lot of them have this tablet and they use it to help them better serve the town and the residents when they're asked questions. They can immediately look something up as opposed to having to run back to the office, things like that.
So that takes us to the bottom number there, the twelve thousand. Now, Karina, actually, almost every one of the, the items that she's just gone over, she has gone over with me and feel that, and gave her the green light to go ahead, because these are those administrative things that are appropriate for, for the office to buy. So we still have that twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety item at the bottom.
And just to quickly interject, the twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety does not include the purchase of the tablet yet for nine hundred and possibly a laptop if we need it as well. So we don't have to, we can store our stuff on it, don't have to run back and borrow one. Often that office is busy doing something else and we have to call and get let in and get the laptop. That was another option. So the remainder of the budget would be approximately ten or eleven thousand dollars, because we didn't purchase the tablet yet or the, potentially the laptop.
So, much the same as what we did at this time last year. There was a question about training, but I believe that the training, if you purchase the training with this year's money, you have to take the training within this fiscal year. So there's really no time to purchase training and have it completed by the end of June. Although Elizabeth and Karina have been going to quite a bit of training, including GIS. It's been great. So similar to what we did last year, issued two contracts to Autobahn and those totaled almost fifteen thousand. We'd be looking at around ten thousand, high nine thousand for a, a new contract with someone. And the direction that we were thinking of going in was a result of a recommendation or an idea from Selectman Bracio at our, at our recent administrative meeting where it was suggested that the long-discussed inspection of open space be perform, which isn't being done, be performed by a consultant who was familiar in, in that area. And so, town planner has reached out to two consultants and has initiated some discussions with them to perform those, the beginning of a cataloging and, well, the cataloging is done, but a physical inspection of open space parcels throughout the town and then documenting that. And so I'm, I'm recommending that that's what we do with the remainder of our budget, is to try to create a new contract with a consultant, qualified consultant, to start those physical, physical inspections of open space. And so I guess I'll, I'll open it up to the board. If, if there's other ideas, we'll listen to them. It's getting late in the fiscal year. If, again, like we did last year, if you think that is a good idea and trust that the town planner and myself or the town planner and another planning board member want to bring that contract over the goal line before June thirtieth, I'd like to hear about it now. Mr. Mills?
I think that's a great idea. I just, the only addition I think would be to make sure that the, or to reach out to the open space committee and make sure they're aligned with the group that we are selecting. or to reach out to the open space committee and make sure they're aligned with the group that we are selecting. At least could have some type of input um to that. But I think it's a great idea and uh would, uh I think it would bring a lot of benefit to the entire process if we were to have that.
Mr. Jenks.
I think that's a logical progression to the work that Autobahn has done.
There's another consultant, uh again, that uh is in that same wo- world of consulting uh that the town planner is dealing with and um she has gone back to both consultants, one of them is, is Autobahn, to try to get some clarity on uh what their understanding is of the, of the scope of work and what perhaps their recommendations are to improve the scope. If we're uh asking for something that we don't really need or if we're missing something that we really do need and put, and have that put into the scope. But um based on uh my discussions with Karina, both consultants are highly qualified.
And, and I'm totally comfortable with you guys sorting that out.
Mrs. Luttrell.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that. That sounds like a, a good next step to the, the two projects that we've had with uh Autobahn to create a baseline and it's a good idea.
Um when this uh discussion happened, town council was there and fortunately we were able to get some guidance on uh that procedure because uh for, for probably years, there's been discussion about uh inspecting these open space parcels and who was going to do it. And the discussion was it's going to be the building inspector, um who has said that he uh isn't, uh doesn't have the resources to do it. And so it's not being done. Uh other discussions have been, well, Conservation Commission and other towns, the CONCOM inspects the open space. Feedback from CONCOM is that unless there's uh wetland resources associated with the open space, then that's not uh what they would do. And so they're not doing any open space inspections. Discussion has been that the town planner does it. And the town planner has been doing it on and off for the last several years, but it's not a, a defined, clearly defined program. It's been more reactive and it needs to be formalized. Uh there's been discussion about uh the Open Space Commission performing the, the inspections. And uh they have indicated that they don't have the resources to do that and so they're not doing it. So when uh so one of the Selectmen brought, brought up the idea about having a consultant do it, if there was uh appropriate funding for that, uh that, that might be a good idea. And it was felt that it is, but in order to um uh properly or have that properly uh moved from, from our budget to this uh contract services, uh town council advised that it would be by the vote of the, uh the planning board to do that. So uh I think based on what I just heard, it's probably appropriate then that we make, someone make a motion that uh we hire a consultant to begin, uh within the available funds, to begin that inspection, open space inspection uh process. If that motion carries, then um council's advice is that we are then within the rules to, to do that. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion uh that we uh proceed with looking at having a consultant perform the open space inspection or enter in a contract with a outside party to do open space inspection with available funds left over from fiscal year budget two thousand and seventeen.
Second?
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, that's the formal vote to uh take that action. Um and then uh I believe, I don't think we took a vote on this last year, uh but the feeling of the board, uh Mr. Jenks stated, I don't know, I'm not sure if I missed it from the other two, that you're uh all in favor of allowing uh the town planner and myself or the town planner and someone else on the board to uh bring these, this contract and this budget uh to the goal line?
Yes.
Very good. So we've reviewed uh our budget in public, we voted in public and um should be uh performing our, uh executing our budget without going uh in the red. Excellent job by the town planner and Elizabeth. And Elizabeth, oh Elizabeth a lot. Um we have, uh next item is approval of minutes, June fifth. Want to take a minute, re-review them and uh...
I even had a chance to read June fifth, the other ones I'm all set on.
What was that? I didn't, I didn't.
I even had a chance to read the June fifth.
So we can vote on these next week? We also have the um uh April twenty-fifth, May first and May fifteenth. Want to do the April twenty-fifth?
Was I at the fifteenth, was that, was I at that one?
Just take a minute, get, get those. Uh the April twenty-fifth, members present was myself, Mr. Jenks, Mr. Stein and Mrs. Luttrell. So this, um is this the meeting that we had at the uh Tradiary School? Oh yeah, just before uh town meeting.
You ready?
Mr. Jenks. Mr. Jenks, April twenty-fifth.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of planning board meeting dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Three to zero, to zero, to zero. Uh the May first meeting minutes.
Good one, good with May first.
That was held here in the town hall. Present was myself, Mr. Mills, Mr. Jenks and Mr. Stein. So we have three members there that are here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes from May first, two thousand seventeen.
Second?
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Three to zero, to zero, to zero. That's the uh May first ones.
I had an abstention on that one.
And then we have uh May fifteenth, that was held here. At the uh town hall, felt, uh present was myself, Mr. Jenks, Mrs. Luttrell. So we have those three here. That was the meeting where we started at six thirty. Ken's Foods. Mr. Jenks.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the meeting minutes of the May fifteen, twenty seventeen meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Three to zero. One abstention. And then the June fifth uh meeting minutes we're gonna try to do next Monday, correct? in the next minute and forty-five seconds, we'd ask the town planner to um tell, uh just very briefly tell us what uh document you received today. I think it was from uh the uh admin for the ZBA regarding appeals. There were several documents.
Earlier today, we received an email from the building department with, I think it's called a complaint uh regarding Park Central project where the applicant has put in for legal action against the zoning board as defendant in regards to their recent decision in May, which in summary was um that the applicant would come before the planning board for site plan review, similar to the first time they came forward, I believe in two thousand fifteen time period, um based on the four items that the zoning board left for the planning board to review as part of the comprehensive permit approval from the zoning board. So that complaint or hearing notice came in or I, I don't know what it's officially called. Um and I forwarded that to all the planning board members, so you should check your email. Then the other item, um this month, the Conservation Commission denied the notice of intent for Park Central and late last week, the applicant, I gotta talk faster. Late last week, the applicant um appealed that to the Mass DEP. Uh and that document, I forwarded you a link to the PDF which is posted on the conservation website. So you'll, you can see both of those documents and I have a copy, two copies for you, Don, of that printed out, cause it, it's a pretty big document.
Any questions or comments on that? Um, Mr. Mills.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four to zero, planning board is adjourned.